Welcome to the January 12, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Father Maximus Habib from Saint Mark Coptic Orthodox Church with us this evening to give us the invocation. If Father would come forward, please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Father.
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, one God, amen. We thank you, our Lord, for a new year. Thank you for allowing us to gather around for the same and one purpose, to serve our community. Help us and to give us the wisdom and the power and the strength to do the best for our community, not forgetting every individual and the importance of every individual in this wonderful city of Troy. We ask you to keep the safety of this city, the growth. Help us to do our best, to do what you allow us to take the responsibility of doing it. We know that without you we cannot do anything, but we can do everything through your only begotten son, Jesus Christ, to whom the glory, the honor, the dominion, and the adoration, from now forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present. I received a call from Councilman Pennington that he would not be able to make the six o'clock study session this evening that preceded this meeting due to business obligations. So I will move the Troy City Council, hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Pennington at the special study meeting of January 12, 2015, due to business obligations. Move by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we excuse the absence of Councilman Pennington as stated. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. And welcome to Councilman Gottlieb. Nice to have you here.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
There are no certificates of recognition and special presentations this evening. There are no carryover items, so we will move to public hearings. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening, a public hearing to receive public input on the City of Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority utilizing tax-exempt bonds for William Beaumont Hospital Troy, with an introduction by Cortina Desmond from Miller Canfield and Nick Vitale. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. The City of Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority issued bonds that are currently being restructured. There will not be any new bond proceeds issued at this time, but because they're being restructured, changed to lower the interest rate and extend the period the bonds will be outstanding, the Internal Revenue Code requires that the bonds be treated as reissued and there be a second hearing at this time to approve the bonds. The City of Troy will not be responsible for any of this stuff.
Understood.
Are there any questions?
First, I will open the public hearing and ask if there are any questions from council at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for a resolution. Mayor? Councilman Henderson?
I'll move E1 as printed. Support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington, or Henderson, and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve E1 as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for coming this evening. I know it was just a technicality, but we appreciate you coming this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. So we will move to regular business as there are no postponed items this evening. I1, Board and Committee Appointments. There are two appointments this evening that I would like to move. I would like to move the appointment of Karen Cruz and Thomas Stratt to the Planning Commission for the terms that expire 12/31/2017. Move by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we appoint Karen Cruz and Thomas Stratt to the Planning Commission for the terms to expire 12/31/2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to them. I2 is Board and Committee Nominations. My first nomination this evening is to nominate Frank Strahl to the Board of Review for the term to expire 1/31/2018. He has asked for reappointment.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we nominate Frank Strahl for the Board of Review for the term to expire 1/31/2018. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. I have two nominations this evening. They were placed on council table this evening on the yellow sheets for a late submittal. Due to Councilman Gottlieb resigning from the Planning Commission, there is an additional opening on that commission, so I will nominate Padma Kupa for that vacant seat that will expire 12/31/2016. And for the seat that is currently held by Gordon Shepke, I am nominating Ali Apahedian for that seat. The term expires 12/31/2017.
Sir.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we nominate Padma Kupa for the vacancy created by Councilman Gottlieb for the term that expires 12/31/2016. And for Ali Apahedian for the term that expires 12/31/2017. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I see Mr. Apahedian is here this evening. Congratulations. Look forward to two weeks for the appointment. Congratulations. And I want to thank Mr. Shepke for his service on the Planning Commission for these past years. Next is City Council nomination, so I will move the microphone to Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. The one we're going to go through tonight is going to be Election Committee Commission. We have two openings. We will, tonight I'd like to put forward David Anderson's name. He'd like to be reappointed for the Republicans. And we have a recommendation from the Democratic Party to put Harry Philo in there for the second position, which would expire January 31, 2016.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we appoint David Anderson and Harry Philo to the Election Commission for the terms that expire 1/31/2016. Discussion. This is a recommendation from the party, correct?
Right. Exactly.
The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any other nomination?
No, I think the other two we're going to let go till our next meeting because we're, as you bear in mind, we're running short of people who have applied to a lot of these positions, so I think we have to solicit some more people, to find some people to volunteer.
Thank you. Next is I3. There is no closed session request this evening, so we will move to I4, an amendment to council rules of procedure. City Clerk, Ms. Bittner, did you wish to say anything on that?
It's a very simple amendment to the rules, just to add Councilmember Gottlieb's name to the rotation for Mayor Pro Tem.
Would somebody like to move that resolution? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I4, Amendment to Council Rules of Procedure, as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we adopt the rules of procedure as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I5 is Employee Residency Incentive/Rewards, and an introduction by City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This report stems from a September 22 city council meeting where the council directed staff to review employee residency incentives and rewards program. After the census data from our employment demonstrated in the first table that of the full-time employees, 24% lived in the city of Troy. So we showed that table as well as part-time, and then we looked at what other communities in Michigan were doing to reward or incentivize their employees who worked for the city to live, either move into the city or those who already lived in the city. And there are several ways to look at this, so this is just the first report of data. And you can see there's varying ways that people do it, including a down payment on a home, in a homeownership program in one community, as well as taking a percentage of pay and putting it into a 457 plan as a retirement vehicle, or 401, whichever the retirement vehicle that could be used. And then we looked outside of the state, just a brief search, and looked at some of the same, some of the same small bonuses that were given to employees. So after that, we talked about this and came up with this information that could be proposed if you were to do something. It would make sense to reward or incentivize by putting money away in a retirement vehicle. That way, it wouldn't be just a check that people spend, and it would be a long-term savings if you were going to consider this program. So we've put the data together. We looked at this from a cost standpoint for all the, by employee group, and so you have that, that information, as well as, what we didn't do is, is there might be a subcategory within a classification. We talked earlier about, say, in classified and exempt, that's the numbers we were using because that's the one, that's the group that's not under contract, and that if we were to start with anyone, it would seem that would be the place to start, that there might be a subgroup of that, whether it be police chief, fire chief, people who work with departmental budgets to make sure, you know, to incentivize or reward them depending on how, their view of the world. So we've put this together for your consideration and your discussion tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Teetz, did you wish to talk about this first, or does the data speak for itself, so to speak, or was there something that you'd like to say before discussion?
I think, I think we gave the same manager some guidance to, to look into this. I think there's a value to having employees that write the policy for the taxpayer, actually live next to the taxpayer, or be a taxpayer, so they can see how things are implemented. And I think there's a great value for, for us as residents. So I like what we see here, and I think it's, it'd be a wise, a wise decision. So with that, I'll just open up for discussion.
Any other comments this evening? There was a resolution placed on the table this evening. I don't know if we're at that point or not, as if anyone else that wishes to speak on this item. Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
I think we, you know, I spoke about this before. I still don't, I don't see how this can possibly be equitable by giving some people who live in the city and work for the city additional money and not give other people who work for the city the same money. It, it just makes no sense. I think what we look for is to look for the best employees to do the best job for the city. And personally, I don't care if they live in the city. If they do, that's great, but I don't really care if they live in the city or Australian Heights. If they're the right people, do the right job to watch my tax money, watch my city, that's who I want. I don't necessarily need somebody who's willing to work here and live here. I just don't, and at this point, I don't see how you retrofit it back into the organizations that we have. Certainly, the unions would never allow that, and I just, I guess I understand what he's saying. It'd be great to have everybody made a decision, live down the street, you know, but that's just not the real world. And, you know, if this came, I would never vote for us to proceed with this myself, so...
Councilman Teetz?
Just, just two questions. The unions would have to vote to not give their members an additional pay increase. I mean, that's what they would be saying, correct? The members that live in the, in the city.
It would be the union representation, which we hope the contract's saying that they're not going to put that provision in their contract for those that meet the criteria.
I think it's, we would consider a bargain, something that would be bargained in, in labor negotiations, basically. It's something that would be bargained. We cannot, today, in my, I defer to the City Attorney Bloom, but we cannot pass a resolution to circumvent a contract that we, that we have with any employee tonight.
That is correct, Mayor.
This is, this is for classified and exempt discussion this evening.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I like the intent of the conversation, and I think it's good that we've explored it if it was on folks' minds. You know, as a taxpayer and as someone who's watched the dialogue in this community over the past 10 years, and as an employee at one time, I did work for the city part-time, I don't see the value of this kind of an investment. When I look at these numbers and I look at the legacy costs, the benefit to be derived doesn't match the dollars we would expend. I watched this staff, in particular, the employee group we are now talking about, get beat up just for their salaries and the retirement that was in our budgets. Numbers misused and misrepresented. I think we could have an unintended consequence of reputationally provoking a negative conversation once again about the benefits that municipal employees get. There's a, there's a narrative and a rhetoric nationally that is very scrutinizing of people who work in the public sector. And at this time, I'm not wanting to provoke that and put us back potentially into those conversations and dialogues. I think the best way that we entice quality people to live here, work here, play here, is to treat them with respect, to, to work professionally, to allow for training, to respect their individual decisions about where they live and why they live there. I worked with people here who live in the city, who were great, and I worked with people who were certainly most professional in everything that they brought to this municipality, who lived in the region, and we are part of a greater region. On that bottom line, it's a lot of money to spend for a solution I don't think is needed. We have an amazing staff. We have a significant percentage that live here. They serve us well. I think we incentivize them, like I said, by continuing to keep the reputation of every entity in this municipality, professional entity, high and strong in someplace they desire to work.
Anyone else? Councilman Henderson?
I like the idea because people that, that work here will have a tendency to pay a little bit closer attention when they see their tax dollars going towards decisions that they're, that they're ultimately making. That said, you know, if every employee, according to the sheets that we read earlier from the city manager, if every employee got in this program, it could cost a million dollars. And, you know, that, that's a lot of money. That's something to consider for sure. But I think the benefit of having people that are invested in the community financially, mentally, and physically, I think is a good, a good step. And it's not disincentivizing people that don't move to Troy. It's just, again, offering just one more, one more reward for somebody that really wants to move here and become interwoven into the community, as the city manager has.
Anyone else? Just my two cents. You know, I, I support the concept. I don't, I don't think the timing is good right now, and I'm not convinced that this resolution will incentivize residency. I, I think we have to look for other alternatives, but, but more importantly for me, I just don't, I don't think the timing is right for this. We, we are still on the heels of a 10% pay reduction to the employees that hasn't been And it's going to take a long time for that, that 10% to get back to all of the employees. And I said that four years ago, when we, we took 10%, that in the public sector, it takes a lot longer for you to get your percentage back than it does in the private sector. So I'm not opposed to this, but I'm opposed to it today. I still think we need to work for all of the employees at this point, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, per se, when the timing is right. So I, Councilman Teetz, I don't know if you wanted to move that resolution and see where it goes at this point, but...
Yeah, it's unfortunate that you feel that way today. Hopefully, we'll get you tomorrow quicker than, than, than not. I, I just, I think this is a positive incentive. There's a lot of folks saying things that this is discouraging or whatnot. This is positive. This is only, you know, if you live here, this is a positive thing to encourage people to live here. You know, in organizations, you set certain standards, certain benchmarks, certain things you're trying to encourage. I think this is one of these things we encourage. That's not to say that we're going to use this as a hiring. You don't have to include where you live in your hiring. It doesn't affect who's the best candidate for the process. And you would be hard-pressed to go to the Ford dealership or the GM lot, or go to some factory where they're manufacturing cars and see someone driving up in a foreign-owned vehicle. I think this is just something that is, something that we expect in the private sector, that, you know what? If you, if you think it's a good enough city to brag about it at the council meeting, we should encourage people to, to live here, and we should encourage our leaders on the, in the municipal government to live here as well. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's very, very disappointing because I think this is something that frankly makes a lot of sense, bring a lot of good people to our city to live here. And I think this would be something that encourages people. And you say, "Well, Doug, how much, how much good is, you know, 1.5% on your salary?" It's going to be, I think it just sets the message and the standard. And I think the message needs to be, if the, if the city's good enough for you to brag about it at work, it's good enough to live in. And I, it's very, it's very disappointing to me that, that we won't take that step tonight. But then again, maybe, maybe I'll bring it up for resolution and then let folks vote it down, because it's voting down pay $2,000 for every employee that lives here in the city that's taken, taken the, I don't consider to gamble, taken the investment to live here. And then it's encouraging folks, "Hey, this is a great place to live. We've talked about it all the time, yet we, we won't put our, put ourselves behind it." The second point is, going just at the financial side, if it was truly a question of finances, then let's change the numbers here. Now's the time we can do it. If that's truly your concern, speak up. We can make that decision. So if, if, if you want to give an amendment onto this, what I'm going to do right now, that's great. But also, just to clarify something that Councilman Henderson said, he said that it would cost a million dollars a year. That's not the case. And it would cost a million dollars a year if every single full-time employee tomorrow moved into the city of Troy. Now, that would be amazing, and be great, great for home values, but it's unlikely. Point number two, year two, we're only, it would only cost $300,000 to, to show this as a value to our city. So we'll bring it up for up or down vote. People can vote their conscience, you know what? And then we can move on. So I'd like to move the resolution, read out loud, "Whereas the city of Troy employs 101 full-time classified and exempt employees, 21 of whom are current City of Troy residents, and whereas providing residency incentive reward may increase the number of city employees' residents, and whereas employees who live in the city may bring a holistic approach to solving city problems, be it resolved, that the Troy City Council hereby approves a 1.5 residency incentive reward into the retirement plan with a one-time $2,000 lump sum bonus for classified exempt employees who reside in Troy." And again, if it's a money issue, you know what? It's very easy to amend this. We can work out the process, but I don't want to bring that up right now, and then we can have a discussion from there, so...
Support. Okay. Moved by Councilman Teetz and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve the resolution that was placed on the table this evening in the Yellow Sheet, I5, as read by Councilman Teetz. Discussion, Councilman Henderson.
Yeah, one other point, too, that I was, I wanted to bring up, and thanks for clarifying that, Councilman Teetz, on the... Councilman Teetz, on the, if every employee jumped into this, which obviously they're not going to, you know, what the cost would be. But the 1.5 percent residency incentive reward that goes into the retirement plan is also incentive for those people to stick it out for the city. They're going to be more invested in keeping their jobs here in the city so that they can take advantage and capitalize on that 1.5 percent incentive.
Mayor Protem Campbell.
Just wanted to do, one of the statements you made is if you go to an auto plant, you see them driving their own cars. Obviously, you have not been to an auto plant for a long time, but you go to a General Motors, Ford, or Chrysler plant, and I can guarantee you that 30 percent of those vehicles are foreign vehicles, not the ones that they build. So that's really kind of a flawed argument. The other issue is, so if somebody wants to work here in Troy and get this 1.5 percent, and they live in Sterling Heights, they should pull their kids out of school, they should sell their house, hopefully at a profit or a loss, and come to Troy, pay more for a house, the moving and everything else, to get a 1.5 percent to show that they have loyalty working in Troy. It makes no sense. It makes no sense for the people to have to do it, and it just, it's just not a balanced approach here. You really are penalizing people who don't live in Troy, who work for the city of Troy. That's, you can't get away from that. You are penalizing. You're offering somebody else who does the same job 1.5 percent more because they live in Troy, and that's not fair. That's not the way you do business, in my mind.
Well, it's obvious that everybody has an opinion, especially this evening on this issue. I don't want to go away from this this evening for myself with anyone thinking that at some point I would not think about supporting this. I go back to my point of, I don't think this is the timing for this. I think we need to think about all of the employees at this point, and then when we're done with that, I'd be happy to look at this again. Further discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner.
Mayor Slater. Oh, sorry.
Did you want?
No, go ahead.
The vote, Ms. Pittner.
Mayor Slater?
No.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
No.
Councilmember Pennington?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion fails. I think we just, this is something we'll discuss further. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anyone at the table that wishes to pull a consent agenda item this evening? I wish to pull J-4A. Anyone else? I'll move the resolution to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of J-4A, which will be considered after the consent agenda items. Moved by the Chair, supported by Mayor Protem Campbell, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of J-4A, which will be considered after the vote. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. I asked for J-4A, and I would just ask if the administration would just indicate the reasons why this is over budget as opposed to what the budget request was for originally. That's all I would need to know.
Very good, Mayor, and this is at the Troy Family Aquatic Center, which I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everybody has had a very good year last year, and under the management of Ellen Elaine and Brian Ghul and Callie Molenar, it did very well, and we look for great things to come. And this is just one of those maintenance items that needs to be done. However, when they put the budget together for the budget, during the budget process, it was taking into consideration just the normal resurface maintenance, not removing the layers of Marsite that had been done over the years, that had not been removed since 1991 when the pool was built. So there is that additional work of removing Marsite, so that's why it is different.
Very good. I will move consent agenda item J-4A as printed in the agenda.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve J-4A as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are three announcements for public hearings. A is January 26th, which is the next council meeting. There's an announcement of a public hearing for Industrial Development District, IDD, and Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate, IFEC, for United Business Technologies, Inc. at 315 Industrial Court. There is an announcement of a public hearing, January 26th, 2015, for reprogramming Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program year 2014 funds. And January 26th, 2015, an announcement of a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2015 application. City Manager Kishnik, did you wish to say anymore on that?
I do not.
Next, our public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I would like to call on Lee Nardi, Troy resident. Good evening.
Mayor Slater, Council. I'm not really sure this is the proper form to present my problem, but I've gone, jumped through all the hoops and done everything, and it's my last resort. I have a weed mowing bill. I feel it's strictly unjust. I've tried to get this resolved. I tried to get it on the council's agenda so you would take action, one way or the other. I feel that, you know, two minutes of talking is not enough time and probably should be a two-way conversation. How would you want me to proceed with this matter? Want to do something right now or put it on another agenda?
At this particular forum, you can tell us your point of view, but we can't have a debate on it at this point. You could send us an email.
I don't have a computer.
Okay. You could write us a letter, but if you want to, go ahead and tell us the issue.
I have three photographs. Would it be possible to have them put up on the screen so everybody can see?
Not right now.
Okay.
Well, why don't you tell us what the issue is, and maybe we can get this thing resolved?
Well, this is a problem created by the city and dumped in my lap. They want weeds mowed on easement. That part is fine, but they attempted to purchase seven feet of my frontage for the easement, and I refused to sell. So they ran a sidewalk up on each side of my property, literally my property, yes, since I didn't sell it, dumped all their sidewalk traffic on my grass. I had to put up a barricade to chase people out on the city property to protect my grass. And also, side issue, they did roadwork there and eliminated the ditches. Now, if people come turn around, they don't care if they hit the driveway, they back up on the grass, turn around on the grass, they spin their tires, they leave ruts, there's exposed roots there on the city easement I'm talking about. That's the reason I don't want to mow it. I'm not challenging your ordinance that we have to mow it. And I've tried to get this resolved, as I said, and the first time I spoke to the city manager's office, the lady there said she would present it to the manager the next day. He would call me. He didn't. It was passed apparently to Mr. Bovinsip at EPW, and he called me, extremely nice gentleman. I asked him if he could come out, and look, so I showed him. I did, or he did, and I showed him. He agreed with everything I said, and I asked, you know, do something about putting the sidewalk around my property, and can you help with, you know, these people turning around on the grass? There's nothing to prevent them from doing it now, as long as there's no ditch. He said, "I gotta go back and talk to the guys at EPW." He said, "I'll get back with you." He called, or came back again, extremely nice gentleman. You couldn't want anything better than him. And he told me that he's giving me everything I want. They're going to resurface Waddles Road in front of my house next year. They will forget about putting the sidewalk through my property, taking out my only tree that shades the house.
Just a second, okay? I'd like to make a motion to amend the rules to allow Mr. Nardi to continue.
Second.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Mayor Protem Campbell, to allow Mr. Nardi to continue with his discussion. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Pittner.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Motion passes. Sorry to do a technicality there on you, but please continue.
Anyway, Mr. Bovinsip said he's going to give me anything he wants, I want, put the sidewalk around my property. Also, they're going to extend the curb, which is maybe 80 to 100 feet west of me now where it ends, they're going to extend it in front of my property, be nobody turning around on my grass. I agreed to go ahead and mow it. So as far as I'm concerned, that issue with the city is resolved. It won't be a problem after that. But I still got this bill for $77 for mowing, and, well, like I say, I talked to Mr. Bowers and all this prior to this, told him I'm not going to pay it, et cetera, et cetera. The guy showed up to mow it, I went out, no one out of city works. I figured, well, they'd charge, you know, pay him eight or 10 bucks, charge me 50. Well, I was on the right track, but I was a little off. He said he's getting paid $3.06 to mow that, and he said, "You're a little sheepish." He said, "Well, I could just turn it in as mowed when I got here, but I don't want to get in trouble." I mean, he was beating around the bush with this.
Okay, I think we understand.
Hold on a second, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
We agreed to do that. I figured, well, I better slip him 10 bucks, you know, because he's given up his 306. I did that, 10 bucks cash. I got a bill from the city for mowing. I went and talked to Mr. Bowers again. He wasn't really sure if the guy turned it in as he mowed it, but whether he turned it in as he mowed it or it was mowed when I got, when he got there, he's double-dipping. He's getting paid by the city either way, and he took 10 bucks from me. That's not right. I think the city should look into this guy.
Okay. All right, Mr. Nardi. Mr. Kishnik, I just gave you an opportunity, if you want to send a report to council at some point over this issue, or would you like to say something?
Yeah, no, I'd rather, I'd like to get Mr. Bovinsip. It sounds like he's involved. I don't know, I know we have a committee that looks at refunding money that was paid, if that's the 75, I'm sorry, $77 in question, and meet with Mr. tomorrow or sometime this week, if you just...
Mr. Nardi, would you just wait until the meeting's over?
Sure.
And somebody will speak with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is James Savage, Troy resident.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council, staff. I'm sorry I missed you last month.
I'm sorry, could you stop the, I'm sorry that, yeah, I missed you also, and I'm sorry that I didn't return your phone call from right after Christmas, but I was gone during the holidays. I just got it two days ago, so I can talk to you afterwards.
That's okay. I was kind of looking forward to meet you and your wife on a social basis, and...
Well, we had a good time. It was a good time.
I'm glad you did, and too often, we do not meet on a social basis. We're here, we discuss business, the business of the city, and particularly as an immigrant, I've found that these events allow me, I can sit down and talk. Whoever I'm sitting with and talking to, I always find that I have more in common than I do in reverse. So anyhow, similar comments. As most of you know, since last April, I have helped organize the monthly dances at the community center. Regrettably, due to flu, I was not at the December dance when Mayor Slater and his wife attended. 2015, being our city's 60th birthday, community center staff decided to make the April 9th dance into a special civic celebration. The details are not finalized yet, but there will be a dinner with entertainment, followed by a dance with a well-known four-piece band. To make it affordable to all segments of the community, we hope to keep the ticket price to $25 or less. It would make this a truly civic celebration if many civic leaders attended. It would be an opportunity for the community to enjoy an evening with family, friends, and colleagues. The center staff are looking for sponsors to help with the cost. We're not looking for huge amounts. For instance, less than $1,000 would cover the band, the entertainment, and many of the odds and ends. So with a little help and a lot of support, we can surely make April 9th event a birthday bash to remember. So I would ask you to save the date, April 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you're feeling better. There are no council referrals this evening. Next is council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilman Gottlieb.
First, I want to just say it's an honor and looking forward to serving with fellow council members, but I wanted to just relate something that I told some of you earlier and share with you that I think reflects what's going on in our city right now that I personally experienced. I was in another capacity, showing a piece of property to somebody who is a building owner in another community who has purchased a building here in our city and then was looking at purchasing yet another building here in Troy. And he was relating his experience of coming into the city offices, and he was inquiring about purchasing property, and he said to me, "I started looking around thinking I was being punked. Where are the cameras? What's going on?" And he said, and it wasn't. It was the fact that the people were actually answering questions he hadn't even asked and giving him good information, and he felt very warm, welcome, appreciated the people that were there serving him. So I just wanted to share that because a lot of the things that I've seen go on in the city have resulted in that type of experience, and that was unsolicited from a guy, you know, didn't really know my capacity in it anyway, so I just want to share it with you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I did hear that earlier today, and my response was that we've done a lot of ribbon cuts and grand openings in the past couple of years. I think Councilman Henderson can attest to that, and we get a lot, so many positive responses from the new businesses that it makes us feel good. Thank you. Next are reports. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to any of the reports that are on the agenda this Since my last comments on reports last meeting, I had the opportunity to meet with the road commissioner along with City Manager Kishnik, and we have a great relationship with them, so it was a very positive meeting. I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.